Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is the 18th of August and I hereby call to order the August 2021 meeting of the Village Tivoli Board of Trustees. If you would please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance to our flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We will begin with the village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
So in the past month, there were two payrolls that were processed. Lorgel Taylor continues to assist with the planning and zoning boards with the meetings and minutes and the projects that are currently going on. Three hundred and sixty-four trash tags were sold and just upcoming, the clerk's office will be closed on Monday, September 6th in observance of Labor Day.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have two sets of minutes in your binders. This is the July 21st regular board meeting minutes and our workshop minutes from last Wednesday, August 11th. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Second.
This is gonna be easy tonight. The deputy mayor is away on vacation, so we can take turns. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And the minutes are approved. Moving on to a treasurer's report. Okay, this month in the general fund, we spent seventy thousand, seven hundred, seventy-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. And out of our capital fund, this is related to the water project, the water mains and the water tower, we spent six hundred, forty-one thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Six hundred, forty-one thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventeen cents for a grand total of seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars, excuse me, seven hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred, forty-six dollars and eighty cents. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I want to thank Treasurer Dave. We've got some large sums of money moving about in Tivoli lately. That's a lot to keep track of, and she does a great job. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the treasurer's report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills this month?
So move.
Take your paper off.
I heard Valdino first.
Okay. Sound travel, it's had a travel, but I could also.
We have a time difference.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Bills may be paid. We do have a zoning report in your binder.
And we do.
Trustee Ezra, please.
And Gary Beck, our interim code enforcement officer, has been very busy. He reviewed four building permits, issued four building permits, responded to twelve complaints, investigated all twelve of them, issued seven zoning violations, zero appearance tickets, five municipal searches. Those are usually because there is a transaction, real estate transaction to eat and place. And undertook twenty-two inspections and provided this zoning Z... A group called Z3 provided code enforcement training. No fire inspections took place.
Thank you, Trustee Ezra. We have no agenda items at tonight's meeting, so we only have a public comment period on agenda items. But since we don't have any actions to take, we will not ask for public comment. We'll go right into committee reports after I announce that our next board meeting will be held Wednesday, September 15th at 7:00 p.m., preceded by a workshop at 6:00 p.m. And the regular workshop will take place on September 8th at 7:00 p.m., both meetings here at the historic Washtepiester Hall. Moving on to committee reports, trustee Ezra.
Yes, I'm reporting on the street painting festival, which a few things are to be solidified. We had a date of September 25th, but we're working on the registration process and that may cause us to move to October 2nd. But we will keep you all informed by the... Getting it on the village website when it is firm. Eko Marsh has taken on the leadership of this and she's already raised some money. She just went and bought some donuts at the bakery and got a check. So I think she's doing a very good job. She's excited about it and a little trepidatious because this is a festival which I have, I won't say led, I would rather say just sort of managed for a number of years. And through the generosity of people in Tivoli, it always happens when it's supposed to. This year, we've got some issues that we're dealing with nationally. So we've made some decisions. One is that we're going to offer half the number of squares that we usually do. We usually have a hundred thirty squares on the street. We're gonna have sixty-five this time, which means that all of the squares will be ten feet apart. Which, it's an outdoor festival, keeping that kind of social distancing. We're hoping that it will be able to proceed safely and meet the demands of the community. It's a wonderful event and we're hungry for this kind of an outside activity. So I'll keep you posted on all of the events. Give you an idea of the kinds of things that we do. We have a number of generous donors in Tivoli. One of whom is John Ludich, who managed Classic Auto. If any of you have ever needed his services, he did it very well. Well, we went up to Classic Auto on Saturday and to discover that he sold the business to Brian, who was there. We chatted with Brian. Then, we still had to see John, right? So we drove to his house, went to the back door, knocked on the glass, and John came out and greeted us. And he will be supporting the street painting festival again this year. So that's how this process goes. It's a personal one. It's a lot of fun if you're the chair because this community is very supportive of this activity and very generous. So we are hoping, we are hoping that it will take place.
Thank you, Susan. Trustee Valentino? At least, or anything else you have to report on? There's no right way. Your way is the right.
Do I read all the lines?
No.
No, the back page, the very last page.
Let's walk, yeah.
In the box.
Yes, correct.
Charges received, charges disposed.
Yes. So we had two charges received, five charges disposed. We have a total of, I'm sorry, I have glasses. We have one thousand, eighty dollars in fines, ninety dollars in surcharges, zero dollars in simple fees. Giving a total of one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you, Peter. I'll see that somehow they caught up on all the parking tickets from last winter. There are twenty overnight parking violations in this court report. Gets you forty-five dollars.
Paying online has increased people being able to pay.
All right. It's warm in here, winter's a nice thought for actually. So it's a few months yet, so the parking ordinance. We don't have the deputy mayor here, but if she were, she would be hammering on her two great themes. One is the Tivoli Free Library is the greatest library around and it's right downstairs. There are always amazing things going on there. So visit their website or come on in and check out our wonderful library here in Tivoli. And her other theme is the deer ticks are the worst and I have heard they've been bad. So be cautious out there when you're enjoying the outdoors this time of year. Couple of things I want to touch on. The Tivoli Children's Rec Camp has been underway for a week and a half. We have two days left, Thursday and Friday. Reports are that it's been enjoyed greatly by the four children who are attending. I want to especially thank our counselors, David Factor, Harris Balessi, Emily Rector, and our fabulous new director, Cassia Graham, who's just been doing a great job. We had our second surprise inspection from Dutchess County today and we passed with no problems whatsoever. They only asked that we get our paperwork in earlier next year, which there's nothing we would like to do more than that. So it shouldn't be a problem. So yeah, it's just been great for the kids and appreciate all the work that has gone into that. The old water tower, the 1938 water tower, is scheduled to be demolished starting next week. On Monday and Tuesday, they're gonna work on a valve, which is right in front of the bus stop, which will let them isolate the tank completely so it can be drained and then dismantled. So they're probably gonna get to dismantling on Wednesday and it's supposed to take about two weeks. The Memorial Park will be a huge fence around most of it. This fence is gonna go from the community garden to the basketball court, Pine Street, and back. So the community garden and the basketball court are gonna be unavailable to folks during this period. So please cooperate. There's gonna be a two-hundred-plus-foot crane and some large pieces of steel and heavy equipment. And this is obviously a safety concern. So we will be watching and do respect that fence. It'll be over soon and then you can get back to playing basketball and picking your tomatoes at the garden. Tivoli's shoreline stabilization project. This has been a thirty-year thing down at the river. Tivoli bought land in 2010 from the railroad and some years after that, we were observing how quickly it was eroding, our parcel that hopefully someday will have a nice public park on it. So we were able to win two grants from the Department of State, a fifty-thousand-dollar grant several years ago to design a shoreline stabilization project. And we got that all through by the D E C so it doesn't interfere with habitat, et cetera. And then we got a four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-dollar grant from the same program, the Department of State, to actually construct this stable shoreline. And that work is finally gonna happen in September. We awarded the bid to the winning contractor last Wednesday. So in September, for several weeks, weather permitting, there will be material brought across the tracks of Diana Street, deposited on the shoreline. And then what the material is, it's riprap rocks that vary in size from yea to yea. And that all gets put along in a four-foot wedge out towards the river. You took a cross-section, it's a four-foot triangle like this. And then it gets planted with all these little plants that get inserted into the spaces to help hold them and help maintain habitat. This project is going to preserve the parcel that this village we all own and get us in good standing to proceed forward with the park, hopefully not too many years away from that. So expect construction down at the riverfront in late September. And I want to say thank you to our friends in the village of Red Oak who have again invited the village Tivoli Board of Trustees to Hardscrabble Day. And everyone, of course, is invited, not just us. So we love to go and walk in the Hardscrabble Day Parade. It's a great event. I think, like many, including street painting, people are having to sort of change the model. I know the Red Oak trustees and Mayor Sumit are working hard on that. So that's gonna be Saturday, the 18th of September, in the village of Red Oak. That same morning, if you got your village email from me last week, there's gonna be a benefit 5K here in Tivoli to raise money for research on children's cancer. And I sent out an email last week to everybody with the registration details. They have a website, which is I Love It, except the "love" has an "e", it's a little different than how we do it here, iloveit.com. And certainly encourage anyone who wants to run, walk, or otherwise help raise money for this excellent charity, please do. So Saturday, 18th, you can run in the morning and then go hopefully eat some filling food at Hardscrabble Day. That's after me. With that, we would like to open the floor to public comment on any topic.
Okay. I think everybody here knows me, but my name is Aileen Diney and I live in Tivoli. And I have a couple of questions and one request. So my first question is, could someone tell me why the garbage cans were removed from the village center?
Sure. Should we take each question in turn? All right. So the garbage cans on the poles were overflowing all the time and that was deemed to be a nuisance. And part of the challenge there is that they are busiest on the weekends when there's the most traffic and the most business, et cetera. And over the weekends, the village has no personnel working who can empty them. And at one time, when those were first requested to me by a certain business association here in the village, the understanding was that businesses would empty them on the weekends if the village provided them. That didn't actually work out in practice well enough such that they weren't often overflowing. And so trustee Ezra has a solid waste committee, trash committee, and the idea came forward that we could be a carry-in, carry-out village and not have those receptacles. If we don't have the receptacles, then they're not overflowing of garbage. So that's why they were removed.
And what we have observed since is that the complaints about them have ceased. That the businesses at least feel that the carry-in, carry-out is working. And so until we hear otherwise, we're gonna leave it as it is. The cost, the estimated cost of having a village employee who is working at a certain hourly rate and would have to be paid for half a day each day they worked is that it would be over ten thousand dollars, which is two and a half percent on your taxes.
Right, so the businesses sort of reneged on their part of the deal, then?
Some did better than others, but.
And what you'll find is that the businesses have worked on it in several ways. So they'll turn the trash can near the entrance so that if you're, you know, opening a soda can when you come in, you can drop it there. But the fact is that we have less garbage on the street and fewer complaints as a result of that action.
But I'd be interested to hear, I mean, you've asked the questions. I'm sure you've thought about this. So I'd be very interested to hear what you think or what you hear people saying.
Well, it just seemed like a mystery. They showed up and they mysteriously disappeared. And I never saw anything on the website. I never heard anything. It was like we're part of an experiment of garbage cans.
Gotcha.
Right? So it was like.
The businesses who had requested them were consulted on the decision to remove them.
So that's disappointing. They asked for it and then they don't do anything with it. So it's not, the village is responsible.
I mean, if we had, you know, it's just as probably not people on the weekends and we're not gonna pay them to come out and do overtime to empty garbage can. If other people, I know like I emptied them, like Peter emptied them, Emily's emptied them, Pete Walsh's emptied them. Like some of us would just grab it when it was terrible. But, you know, Tivoli's gotten pretty active, particularly on the weekends. And there's a lot of coffee cups and a lot of ice cream cups and a lot of stuff. And that, you know, we didn't have a system. That system was not working because there was draped with garbage all the time.
Yeah, they were. They were. And there was no point in having recycling garbage because they went the same way.
And they attracted bees and other bees.
As usual.
We also had a lot of household garbage showing up in them. So, you know, a single small bag of household garbage can stuff your can for the whole weekend. That happened a lot. So that's some other, you know, it's kind of an honor system thing and there you go.
Not to mention household garbage that people were living under, we can't.
So I mean, what to do with the solid waste is frustrating because I was originally, I painted all those cans myself and was breaking it, recycling and hung them up and like unfortunately didn't really work out.
Okay, I mean, I just always wondered. And I know solid waste is a problem behind, you know, the buildings, you know. Nobody wants to pay for garbage. Everybody thinks it's free, it's time.
Well, we should have sort of announced to the whole community that this was.
Well, it'd be nice to know. I mean, I just wondered.
It was literally, I think it was like, let's try it for a week and see what happens and then we were busy with other things. So yeah.
Okay, so the second thing is the water tower's gonna be taken down, the old water tower. And so water's been leaking there, you know, all summer. So the part of removing that will close off all that piping and stuff and they'll take that water away and there will be no water in the street.
So the leak you're seeing is on the street?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's this valve that they're gonna replace. Yeah, so the valve's gonna be replaced Monday and Tuesday. And the fact that it was leaking was holding up the isolation of the tank such that it could be taken down.
Oh, so it's not connected? It's part of the water system that's staying, not the water system?
Yeah, because even when the water tower is gone, there's still a water line that goes straight under it, connecting Pine Street to Memorial and the whole water system. But yeah.
Okay, that's a hazard in the water.
Yes, absolutely. So that should be over Monday, yeah.
Okay, that's good, thanks. And then the third is a request that with all the changes going on in the park, if the lighting over the basketball court can be removed. And I brought this up years ago with Tom Cordier when he was the mayor. And he told me that it was a security issue. So I did hear that. But if we could move the light to the pathway or the road where people could be secure walking through the park, coming off the bus, walking home, but not have a free-lighted basketball court 24 hours a day. And I know this isn't gonna be like, oh, something that can be done like that, but I know it creates a lot of noise. I don't know if other neighbors on the street hear. I know I hear nightly games. I do go out and ask them to leave. Some do. You know, the other night there was a fire. Somebody set off fireworks and there was a big fire on the pathway. I mean, if we don't have lights, maybe it will discourage activity in the park when it's dark. That's my request. Is there any way to work towards changing the lighting in the Memorial Park so that we're not inviting evening basketball or evening hangout on the basketball court?
Yeah, I would absolutely take a look at it. I think lighting the path would be a great benefit. I mean, there's a lot of, the path gets a lot of use connecting Tivoli through the park and people walking back that way, absolutely. I think, you know, absolutely take a look at the, you know, intention. I can empathize with Mayor Cordier because when you go by and there's a light on, you can see if anyone's in the park after it's closed and know, hey, I gotta, I do this all the time. I drive around Pine Street and I go in the park. I say, hey, you know the park's closed. I do that regularly. If there were not a light, you know, it'd be harder for me to see if someone was in there. I agree with you, it would be harder for them to play basketball without a light. So I see your point.
Right, is it just?
But they're not supposed to be doing that anyway after 10 o'clock.
I hear you. And I've asked people to read the rules. I've asked people if they know how to read. They don't read them, the rules. And it's only gonna get worse because I feel that when the tower goes away, there'll be another recreation spot there. It's a big spot, nice flat spot. So you're gonna have the quarter pipe, you know, another spot or something, and then the basketball court. And it's like a welcome to recreate. And I'm glad that the park's being used, but we're talking 10:30, 11:30, 12:30, 1:30, 2:30, 3:00, 4:00. You know, there's been a lot of fireworks going on there recently. I don't like it, but I can sleep through it. My dog, she doesn't sleep through it.
Well, unfortunately, when people keep doing that, you know, we'll have to have patrols and have them go around the cop, go around the park, kick people out of there.
Right, that's expensive.
It is.
And I've seen them all run away and go on the roof of the side that's not lit by the basketball court. So I don't see that as really feasible because it's expensive and.
Do you, how do you think we can fix this post-closure activity?
I think if it's not lit, you're inviting less people, right? And that's a start and then we see where we go from there.
Do you think it could be not lit without addressing lighting the path? Like I sort of think you need light for safety for people to move through.
Right, people want to get off the bus and walk through the park. I get that.
I don't think we'd ever want to pitch black for a period, but if the lights could be redesigned such that they provide security for a pedestrian, but it didn't facilitate night games.
Yes.
Right, is that kind of what we're talking about?
That's what I'm looking for already. So you could walk at a time or even.
Yeah. It's very frustrating that people don't just follow the rules. We could be doing something much better with our time, but such is the nature.
It is, it is. But, you know, in a good way. You get a fresh crop every year, kids all getting a year older and getting their license and being able to move about freely. I don't think that's gonna change. You know, even when the nets were removed, they were skateboarding. So it'll get repurposed. So even if we said, oh, taking the nets every night, it'd be like, okay, then the skateboard community will, you know, take that opportunity, right? But you need light. I think you do, at least for those sports. So if we could put less light on the basketball court, that is, you know, what I'm looking for in the long term.
Right.
So, because I know the pump house will go away. So the electric that goes to that, I don't know if that will be removed or just left there, I don't know.
Well, the, so that's a well in that house and currently the well's still part of the water system. That is our least producing well. And so there's some discussion of whether it could go offline at some point. But I think we can, we will absolutely take a look at redesigning lighting. I mean, I don't think we want it dark for people who are walking through there at night. I think that would create a whole other problem, right?
It's a safety concern, yes.
Yeah, yeah. But that lighting could be good for that and not good for playing basketball, it seems. If done, if done correctly.
And then the last thing was the bathrooms that are open. I think that's great. There's not this flow of people coming to the corner of their property to pee. And I will say it's been both men and women, which has totally surprised me. So the bathrooms are open. What's going to be the policy going forward with the bathrooms? Are they gonna stay open? Are they closed at dusk?
Yeah, they usually are closed at dusk and, you know, certainly when the park's closed, open in the morning and then they get closed around like mid-October and then open in the spring. This year, they were not open until very recently. So for most of the spring and summer, obviously that was firstly a COVID concern. And then secondly, as we approached the children's camp with the unfortunate tradition of trashing the bathrooms that goes on here, I kept them locked up until the camps started.
Right, and they didn't get trashed. And they haven't been trashed. I mean, I just saw them walking by, they're open, they look okay. Do we just think we're lucky or?
That they haven't been trashed yet?
Yeah.
Well, it's been two weeks.
Okay, so that's.
And there's been activity. I mean, there's been, I've had a daily cleaner and, you know, we have the rec camp underway. And there's no softball league, which got them a lot of summertime use that often resulted in them being pretty messy.
Did their softball league move like the Tivoli, they go to Red Oak?
I think so, I think so.
Okay, so it's not a COVID thing?
That the softball team left? No, no.
Okay, so that's good. I hope that they don't get trashed and they stay open because. because it has made a difference for the number of public, toilet users.
Well, that's, that's good, and I'm pleased to hear it's, you've seen an improvement, so thank you.
It is. Thanks. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For constituting the public tonight. Trustees, anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Seven thirty-four, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.